It's 5:30 and it's called a meeting of the county commission in their order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. First item on the agenda would be the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Motion in a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we address the drone change in the volume price?
Oh, yeah. There was a change in the drone price from our previous minutes. I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
So before we...
Yeah, we had it at like thirteen, when I recharge my minutes, thirteen thousand.
There were some additional shipping charges to that, so it's like fifteen something.
Fifteen thousand two forty-nine.
For the cost of the drones, so a little extra than what we originally had on our approved at our last meeting. All the orders. All the other minutes have changed.
Wouldn't, sorry, just as a point of clarification, wouldn't the minutes not change and would we just have to approve fifteen thousand instead of thirteen thousand at this period?
Well, the original motion was for the fourteen, just so you guys are aware that...
Right, I know, just out of sake of like correct records, you know. Well, I don't know, never mind. Final papers, final decision.
Think that we should approve it at the original amount?
Well, it's just that we should...
I think the minute should stay the same and we should, we should just make it an amended or another motion just to pay the difference.
Right, that, that was my, it's not we're gonna have, not going back an amendment.
At that time, that's what the minutes should be required. We should just make a motion now or we paid those to pay for the additional change.
Okay. I'll do that.
So I guess if it's all right with the chair, I'll make the motion that we paid the difference, which comes to, how much was it? About fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Fifteen two forty-nine.
So two thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars?
Motion, second? Are we paying that? You want a roll call? Or we just...
Well, we haven't gotten it yet, so...
Oh, yeah, we haven't gotten the drone, we're not paying the bills, so. Call in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion approved. So now we should be all good?
Yep.
Approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda as submitted, as printed. Second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Deana Kemet, Central District Director of North Dakota Extension.
Hi there, stranger to this group, right? Sarah coming up, you're gonna, she's gonna maybe give a little report too. We have a downtime, right? I feel bad because I know there are other people here waiting. Who will go first?
Sure, yeah, I just, while I have you guys here, our committee for the Lake Region Extension Roundup has, has met a few times and we are looking at, we'd like to have, hold it in person, but we just, you know, obviously last year we did it virtually and it went fine as well, so, you know, in the case that we are able, you know, that things are looking fine and we're able to hold it in person, we're just making sure that it is okay with the commission that we go ahead and, you know, plan like we have in years past and host it in the Memorial Building with some breakout sessions in the Memorial Building basement, courthouse, meeting rooms as well, and armory. Yep, that would be...
I'm, I'm great.
Yeah?
No, I think we plan, you plan on it being like a normal year and then just consult with District Health as it gets closer.
Right.
See if we have to make changes, but otherwise we can go.
Right, yeah. Okay, and same, same timeframe, early January, two days.
Wonderful, we look forward to it.
Okay. Chris, if you have any issue, doesn't deliver some feedback saying we can't do those today, so...
Oh, we hope the numbers don't go any higher than what they're currently at, so...
Sounds like what we here do, that somewhere in November, we should, by early November, if we can hope to go down, so. All right, anything else from, you're not just round up, we just wanted to see if we should move forward with planning, so.
Okay, so I see under agenda that I'm slated to give an update on the county agent position, which is one of the two things I can't really discuss with you. So should I do that one first?
Sure, yeah.
Um, right now we have two candidates that we are looking to interview, so Adam has volunteered to be the representative, obviously, from the mission group as holding. So we just screened yesterday, so we'll be looking at dates. I actually block dates for next week as I'm an optimist, I was hoping to pull it off. However, the biggest question I have is, one of our candidates is out of state and if, I, I kinda wanna nod and you all can weigh in on this, if we want to do an in-person interview with both of the candidates, I just need to know and I call and make the arrangements, which I'll start working on tomorrow. I mean, would you wish to give the opportunity for a virtual? Because they have to do a presentation and spend time answering questions with the committee.
So, so the question basically I hand is, do we give them the option to not have to, not have to travel?
To not have to travel, but we pay for their travel, just so you know. You don't pay anything. But if, if the feeling is you want them to come here, and then I can tell you this, um, this candidate actually interviewed for a position at Langdon Research Center two weeks ago, so she came to North Dakota and was in Langdon and was one of the top selected, but not the selected candidate, so she has been to, you know, the general area. I think she probably flew into Grant Works, but, um, but if you want her to come here, I will make that part of the deal. If you want to interview, you have to come.
That's always the preferred method.
Okay, no, I, I would say that's the preferred method.
I just needed to know if that's how we're leaning, because she contacted me and she actually asked if virtual would be an option and I said, well, since I'm going, I'll just ask. Okay, so we'll be interviewing too. I will be in touch with you either directly or through Sarah to set up the interviews and we have two other people identified to serve on the committee with the three of us. You all okay with that?
Yeah.
You're the partner, remember, we, we move together through the process.
How many apps did you have?
I, I was thinking I was gonna share that information, but I, we had three people who applied, two that we thought were worthy, I guess, that meet the minimum requirements. So those will be the two we interview. I'm not gonna lie, I don't know, as the newspaper person, we have to give a little bit of a...
Don't lie, there's a...
No, I'm not gonna lie, I just don't want it, I don't want it printed in here. I'm a little disappointed that we didn't have any internal candidates. I worked pretty hard in the central district trying to get some of our experienced agents to consider a move, given the opportunity to negotiate a salary, bringing along that nice experience, but I don't know, people get pretty rooted in their communities and that's a good thing, but I had a couple that actually came to Grant Works and drove around and looked at it and gave it some serious thought, but... So the two candidates that we have, one is from elsewhere in North Dakota, but not from within Extension, and the other candidate, like I said, she is a doctoral graduate, I mean, so she's, she's very top-notch and like I said, just got real close to being hired as a specialist, but we, we, we would be doing wonderfully if you didn't want them, I think. One is stronger for H background.
So just as a quick point of clarification, in case I missed it, you are going to allow virtual if that's the only, so, okay, so we've decided that...
She's gonna have to come.
So then you'd only be interviewing one candidate?
True.
Well, if, if she's willing to...
If she's willing to come.
Right, if she's unwilling to come, then you only have one candidate, is that, that's fair?
I don't think that'll happen.
Okay.
I, I really don't. I got the feeling in my conversation with her that if, if we had consensus that face-to-face was the way that she would come to remember us, so...
Okay, that, that's fine, I just...
And again, it won't cost you anything, NDSU pays for their travel and all their per diems and stuff, so... Now, we can look to Adam for a little bit of an update, maybe.
Well, does NDSU have a preference?
Um, no, some, in the east, the district director, she's hiring right now for a couple positions and she is allowing virtual, their numbers are a bit higher for COVID and, but then they do, oh, any interviews that they're doing, in one as virtual, they have both for three or four, they all have to be virtual.
They all have to be virtual.
It is not my favorite way, I have done it that way, you know, like a year ago, we felt we had to. Um, I, I like hearing from people too, I get it, so.
Yeah.
We'll go that way and I'll be in touch.
Especially during the presentation portion, it'd be a lot easier to do it in person.
Certainly.
Yeah.
You think she's ever been in Grant's County?
I don't know, she was in Langdon and again, I don't know that she came through here, but it is nice if they come and at least...
You're not sure if she's ever been here?
I'm not sure that she's ever been here. I know that she was in Langdon and I'm pretty sure she had to fly into Grant Works, so she traveled, you know...
I think it would be logical that if you wanna experience your community...
Yeah, she's, she's spent some time in North Dakota previously as part of her undergraduate program at one of the research centers, so she might have some knowledge, I, it'd be a good question to ask. Okay, and I have to say this next little piece, this is definitely not new news to you guys, this is a courtesy call. You don't have to just pass it down this way instead of walking around. Sarah, you wanna look at what I'm handing out? I'm sorry, I'm not an extension person, we always hand out things, don't look at it. Um, you guys probably are more familiar with this piece of information than any of the other counties that I'm dealing with right now and that is the mill levy and the vote that's coming due to expire in 2024. I know that you guys have gone down this road and you've tried to pass additional. According to my notes, and you could remind me, um, I've been talking to a lot of auditors lately about mill levies and I wrote down in my monitor that at last taxable year, you guys were at 2.5 mills that support the extension program. So half a mill is what you're above, you know, a lot of two, so if it would reverse, what's a mill in your county word? I didn't have that in my notes.
Sixty-six.
Oh, so we're talking, yeah, even at half, that's still thirty-two thousand dollars. So, um, I, I mean, our leadership folks are working with Terry Trainer, which I know you guys all know Terry Trainer. They actually put together a PowerPoint presentation and delivered information to the Association of Auditors. So, um, it's been ruled out, auditors are not new to this, they have already been aware of what we're gonna go around and talk about. Also been mentioned that at the Association of Counties Conference coming up in October, there's gonna be a session that is focused just on this. So if you wanna come together at the table with other counties, as you can see by the map, and you're not alone, I will tell you of the counties in my own district, I have several that are opting to just leave it and they're, because the amount is such that they're just gonna take from their general fund to make up the difference. But there will be a few, at least three or four, that will be going to ballot, so... So my leadership team asked me to come and tell you, you know, to be just thinking about your options and how it is to do nothing and let it expire and figure out where you're gonna cover that half a mill or replace the mill levy, yeah, with general funds or reduce the extension presence in the county. That's a hard thing for me to even say out of my mouth, because I'm talking about filling position right now and I recognize that probably that amount is somewhere in the neighborhood of your 50% of that person's salary, so, I mean, we could right now say if we felt we weren't gonna be able to come up with that half a mill, we don't wanna lose the staff we already have, so give that some thought. We have till 2024 when it expires, but you can...
Yeah, excuse me, hasn't Randy kind of voted on this?
Couple times, but, yeah, but it failed.
But it failed, oh.
So it, it will expire to 2024, the soonest now opportunity that you have to put this on a ballot would be June of 2022 and the Association of Counties is actually drafting some ballot language to provide to the counties. There's a lot, you can see 22 that have been effective in the past five years, going above two. So, um, in 2024, you're gonna come up against roads and capital improvements. Their mills expire the same year and so Extension recognizes that we do not want to be on the ballot opposite roads and capital improvements, so we're kind of trying to work with our partners to say, let's do everything we can, if we can get it on earlier and then if you get it fails again, you at least have another chance to take a run at it. Okay, but, I mean, again, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just laying out your options. Also want you to know that NDSU Extension staff, like Sarah's and the, whoever we hire, they cannot lobby during their work hours or with county resources. Obviously, we don't use taxpayer dollars, so our ed communications department will be drafting some things like some language as well that they can use, they can, there are ways that they can help, but they can't do it during work hours or with county resources, so... We will work with advisory councils, 4H councils and any other groups that our agents have up like the crop improvement associations and plead with those people to help do, do some of that ballot work that agents have. So any questions and then I'll be done, because I think I've got a lot to go on there. You ready?
Thank you, so I have a question for you, Deana.
Yeah?
I know I'm not out of the county commission, I'm just wondering when this legislation became effective? Do you know?
Uh, you know, I have it on here, the person was, and it was the one that's eleven dash thirty-eight dash zero one and then one. The number two, well, will be ten in 2014, because it was a ten-year, it was set at ten years, so... Um, you can look it up in the North Dakota Extension Code and I'm sure it's got a date in there, I'm sorry. Um, just as 2024 unless it's set to expire sooner.
I believe it was part of the, uh, when they did the mill levy, when, when they tried to, you know, they had that big commission Governor Galmerco had and then they tried to determine if they could combine some mill levies and stuff like that. Part of the deal to get it through was they stuck cap on, on a couple of them that we were gonna have to revote on and I think that was part of that whole process.
So the one option they have, I mean, is to specify mills that you vote specifically for extension or that are like in town or county, they vote for a home rule, which means people's taxes aren't affected, but, I mean, you know how that works, they just give themselves the freedom to shift where mills were needed.
We, we definitely don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you've been doing this more than I have, that's why I said I'm definitely coming here with my notes, because I'm no expert on this, I know who you all are.
Look like you're talking about the main, the commission level, but I guess in my mind is if, if, if we look at asking for both of them and neither of them passed in that 2024, we're, we're out of our milk now and we've got no place to vote.
Certainly, certainly, so...
So it's gonna be interesting, let's put it that way.
Uh, just know that we're here, that we wanna work together, we wanna make sure we do things the right way and however we can, should, right?
Thank you. Thank you, Deana.
Sorry.
Thanks, Sarah. Rhonda?
Hello, thank you.
How are you?
I'm, I'm good.
Good, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm here today to talk about COVID sheltering for homeless persons or persons that have nowhere to isolate. We have, um, numbers are ramping up, we're due to hit our peak here um, at the end of the month into November, we're speculating we could house if we're... You know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't like to play the numbers game, but I would tell you ten to twelve people, we have not had a request yet, but I believe that we will. Um, I just talked with Alan from Public Health, Alan McKay, and he told me that, um, you know, they are having more people come in for vaccinations, but we will have a need for homeless COVID sheltering. Um, I'm sad to say that we did run that during the height of the pandemic in March last year. We just do not have the capacity. Um, I know that Ed and Adam listened to our child welfare supervisor at our meeting on, last week on Monday, we are absolutely positively tapped out. So, um, I did, I was in contact with Brenda Bergerud last week and then today we had another conversation. Um, for her to, for her organization that does have peer supports and they do advocacy for, um, they have a, they have a contract with the North Dakota Department of Corrections for folks that are coming out of the prison system to, to provide peer support, that type of thing. They do a lot of things, they also have that Machi mentoring program for, um, you know, young people that, that need a mentor, but, um, Brenda would be willing, her agency would be willing to provide the 24-hour support. We just found out that we put folks in a motel without 24-hour supervision and support, it just doesn't work. Um, it did, but, um, I'm gonna tell you, we are tapped out. I, I am not willing to ask my staff, and I, I hate to say this, I could do it, but I could not keep up the pace that I think it would require. I took five and six day stints before we had 24-hour supervision. It's a couple, it's a couple calls a night for a couple, I mean, you're up several times during the night answering questions, so we really do need that 24-hour support, that's expensive. And so, um, it's a thousand dollars for a 24-hour to have the intake person and support. She would also arrange the meals, do the intake. Um, Alan McKay from Public Health does have a nurse that he could dedicate. We'd also use resources from the Human Service Center for, um, mental health issues that do arise and they were very good to work with last time. And then we get meals from, um, the senior meals and that's about thirty-five to thirty-seven dollars a day. So it is reimbursable by FEMA, I know that Candy and I talked about, she was like a trooper and said, I'm willing to go into the portal and, and make, make, um, get our money reimbursed, so... It's not cheap, we're looking at about thirteen hundred dollars a day. I don't know, because I don't have access to the portal, what would be reimbursed. Alan does not have COVID money, the county did not pay last time, it was COVID money from Public Health, paid all the bills for the COVID sheltering. And I apologize, um, the number flew out of my head, I was gonna tell you how many we sheltered last year, but I think it was, I'm looking at Candy, twenty-six?
I don't, I don't think it was thirty.
It wasn't thirty, it was a lot of money. Um, I, five to, five to six days was the, was the timeframe that most, most people stayed.
And it's thirteen hundred dollars a day per person?
Roughly, yeah. Although if we put a family in a room...
Some it would be overlapped too, if there's four or five people and at the same time you just have to have one person staff for the twenty-four.
Right, so it's just the days, we don't have one person, we don't have a staff person per person, thank you, Adam. Sorry for clarifying that.
Okay, so it's not twenty-six times thirteen hundred times four to five?
No, no, it's not that.
Some lower number than that?
So if we had five people in there, it would still be a thousand dollars to staff it and do the intake, yes.
Okay, so no matter how many people we have, it's thirteen hundred dollars a day?
Well, the, the meals would go up, so...
Well, sure, right, but, but in general, it's nearly that, okay.
It's sixty-nine, well, if they give us the same rate, it's about sixty-nine dollars for a motel room, about thirty-five for, and I probably didn't say that, thirty-five for, um, the meals and a thousand dollars to, to staff it, so if there's ten people or eight people or two people or one person, it would be a thousand dollars for the 24-hour staff, which is very expensive. And I, I will add in that, I will hope and maybe even pray that we don't get a call. But I think that's not worked for me before, you know, my on-call years of, of doing human services, so...
Hope and pray doesn't work?
No, my dad had a saying about hoping and praying and I won't share that here, but you can imagine. So, it wasn't good, I don't think my granddad liked it much, but that's what he said, so...
Rhonda, does the state say anything about helping with this?
No state dollars, it would be FEMA reimbursement.
Federal.
Federal.
But we don't know what portion.
But we don't know at what, what rate?
So in other words, we'd have to front the money to pay the bill and then we would be looking for reimbursement, but we don't know what the percentage of reimbursement is yet.
We also don't know what the bill is yet.
Yeah, right.
But we just have to pay them.
Well, so basically, basically what I think, if I'm, unless I'm wrong, Rhonda, what you'd like, and I'll just throw a number and I could be wildly wrong, but you would like us to approve, say, out of the COVID dollars that we have, I presume that this must be an allowable use. Um, you know, we, that we approve up to twenty thousand dollars in expenses and if for whatever reason it needs to be more than that, you could come back in and ask something to that effect? Does that appear to work?
Um, I, that would work, um, it would also, we could also get it back through FEMA if we wanted to go to the work, if you wanted to spend your COVID dollars on housing and hope that we don't have a lot of folks, that would be another thing we have worked...
Well, I suppose we couldn't get reimbursed if we were spending federal COVID dollars?
No, you, well, you can, but you can't, I mean, it'd have to be general fund and then if you don't get reimbursed, you'd have to just use it, so I, I don't think we'd get a hundred percent. Any, no.
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 That's why I asked about Bismarck. They should be part of the game, they got COVID money, a lot of it.
I think it was in Bismarck's hands at one time and then they...
They dumped it on us.
They dumped it on us.
They dumped it on Kenny?
And it was, it was the state's.
Yeah, it's, oh, really, no one, they're very surprised when no one, does that surprise me?
Yep.
Unfounded, no.
Yep. Well, it is not, I mean, this is totally, if you're, it's totally up to our community. It really puts the hospital in a bind, it puts the emergency room in a bind if we don't have someplace for someone to go that, that needs to be somewhere. Um, because obviously, they cannot go to someone's house. I, apparently something's happening that's better, because our numbers would reflect, again, and I'm not good at this, but our numbers would reflect with the number of people that we have positive, that we have three or four by now, but we have not had a request, so...
What's also warmer than it was in March?
Good point.
I don't know if we need necessarily to put a dollar figure on it, but, which is essentially we need to make a motion to allow for it to, to occur basically, right?
Probably, uh, but then the question becomes, if we go that direction, is it general fund dollars and hope we get reimbursed or are we gonna spend COVID money?
This is really open-ended.
Well, that's kind of, yeah, a concern. I, I think, at least in my opinion, you spend the general fund dollars, then you try to get it reimbursed and then what doesn't get reimbursed, you, we got COVID dollars to backfill it. Cause that's what COVID dollars were for.
For a while.
And we got four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I'm just listening, it ain't gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars. But that's something, not four hundred thousand dollars.
Rhonda, is there anything else that you know?
Um, how about vaccination?
They're ready to spend all the money. I can't believe there's a lot of it gonna come back to the county.
Well, I don't wanna say, but I think sixty to eighty percent would be a FEMA reimbursement, but, um, it's not, it's not a hundred. It's not a hundred, um...
But sixty to eighty is kind of guaranteed, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that's, I think that's what it, yeah, I think that's what it was in... Yeah. I never read that work on, I don't even... Then we, we did have, um, at least, I know that someone that knows a lot about Candy's gone in there and looked around, she gets it, I, um, have, don't have access to the FEMA portal. I don't want access to the FEMA portal, just to be clear, but, um, um, I can check it out, we can go in there and see if anything has changed. I just know that, um, based on the experience we've, we've had this summer with hospitalizations, we've had, we've had a kid that needed serious medical care and I told you this and we had another one diverted, um... Did we? There's just nowhere at the end for anyone, so if you're, if you're, if you're ill, um, you know, you'd go to a hospital, but if you're not, if they can in any way keep you with treating, they're gonna try to keep you.
We, we have about thirty seconds here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we, not, not thirty, can we, okay, go listen to after the question?
Well, either that or make a quick motion and decide.
Would it, would it make everyone more comfortable if we capped the dollar figure and then see where it goes? Okay, I'll make a motion that we, that we retro added to, to work with the Machi to, uh, set up for the possibility of needing to use homeless shelters for COVID and, and cap it at twenty thousand dollars out of COVID dollars. Let's, let's do general fund right now and then, and then we can see if we can get reimbursed.
And then we'll backfill.
Yeah, then we can backfill.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, uh, Rhonda working with the Machi for a twenty-dollar, twenty thousand dollar cap on homeless shelter, at that point, come back and visit us if you exceed that. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Yeah, thank you very much. And our voice, Candy, to get the reimbursement.
It is six PM, we will, uh, talk about the 2022 budget hearing, we'll open that up for public discussion. And we do have some public here that would like to discuss the 2022 budget, I would assume. Anybody wanna go first? We can certainly talk about the budget. Unfortunately, uh, we will see an increase next year. A big chunk of that is derived way out of our need for additional law enforcement. Law enforcement, incarceration, um, comes back to state's attorney. And...
We're getting a big hit on all three.
And we're, we're, we're getting a big hit on all three. Our uh, numbers have increased locally for incarceration, averaging about forty-two inmates a month.
Probably more.
Probably more.
High poverty, I would say.
Nine-one-one calls were currently thirteen hundred and fifty-four calls more than what we had all of last year.
Well, I think the state's attorney probably will attest to his case, but also...
And we have those case numbers, um, increases from last year to this year, big increases.
Anecdotally speaking, we're looking at about fifty-nine percent.
Increase.
Through where we were last year to where we are today.
Yeah.
And I, I know people wanna say, well, last year was kind of a goofy year, but even compared to 2019, they're up too. And within that, we're seeing more violent type crimes.
Stuff where we have to keep people locked up for safety, to make sure that people are out.
So we're currently looking at an additional... Now, six point, point five percent mill increase. And I understand that's been a big increase, and we don't wanna create additional hardship. But with that, it's open to the public. Anybody wanna?
Do you have a copy of the budget that we could look at?
Sure.
I mean, something that I can take home?
Well, you can give me another copy, Candy.
That's it? We, we can, we can certainly get a copy.
Yeah. Got the, the mill sheet through the actual full budget.
Yeah, did you want the full budget?
Um, just to, I, just to break down, break down.
Yeah, we have the full budget line for line, and then we have a breakdown setup. Print a couple, you can take out, and you can see what we're looking at. Essentially, last year, we were at ninety point eight-one mills, and we're, we're looking at ninety-nine point four-four mills. So it's about an eight point, if my math was right, eight point six mill increase. It's an eight hundred and six thousand dollar increase of total, total taxes uh, over last year, above breakeven. And, just, I guess I can echo Jeff's points. If you look at our line items on, on how our budget works, um, our law enforcement center bill is up four hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the budget. Uh, the state's attorney's budget is up probably, what, a couple hundred thousand in that range? Uh, the sheriff's department budget is up another couple hundred thousand. So basically, all of the increases are law enforcement related, essentially. On top of the fact that we actually have put additional mills onto more road projects than next year too, so, so, to rebuild the fund too. So I think in all honesty, I think, I was kinda surprised after we sat through our initial budgeting in August, that we came in honestly, as well as we did considering all of the pressure that our budget has been under these last couple of years.
Well, I'd say, what, nine out of ten on average of our departments had no increase at all? There were most, almost every department came in with a breakeven budget, which...
Yeah, essentially, it was just our, our, our increase in salary to try to keep up with inflationary factors, and then it was law enforcement costs. This is basically what the budget is, I see, if we have. And I, I don't think any of us has a good answer on it. Make that more palatable, other than, um, we've had many discussions in here talking about, how could the state maybe chip in to help us a little bit locally with incarceration costs and things of that nature, but...
Well, and I, and I think, you know, I don't mean to put words in the public's mouth, but I assume that this is what they're feeling, which is, this is unsustainable. And I agree. You know, I'll be the first one to agree with everybody here. This is unsustainable, and if costs continue to increase in terms of incarceration, it will break the company. And so, the end result of that is, the state is going to need to step in, and, and as commissioners, it does fall to us to, to make that case to them, you know? But in the short run, we're gonna be spending on incarceration next year, no matter what the state does, so, we got a budget for it.
And very similar to social services in years past, and thank goodness they, you know, saw the, the need for that, and they took over the social services costs. Um, but this is another area that we certainly need help with, and I think they're seeing it across the state. Um, but we're certainly feeling the brunt of it here, right here in Ramsey County, and... You know, look, looking at numbers from the sheriff's department, Steve had given me numbers, uh, twenty twenty general calls for service was twenty-six hundred and forty-four. Um, year to date at the end of, end of June was two thousand forty-one, so they're almost at their number of uh, calls for service halfway through the year. Uh, traffic stops are up, um, you know, over, uh, double on traffic stops. Arrests are about, uh, you know, from two hundred and eighteen all of twenty twenty to a hundred and twenty-five through June. So, so unfortunately, it's uh, the, you know...
It'd be interesting to see what the calls for service from the police department in town is, because that's what we're getting, a majority of the charged out cases, I would assume, from any town, from the police department. I'm sure they're up to...
Other questions, comments from the community?
Mr. Schluter, anything for us tonight? No? Mr. Beamer?
I guess I'm here as the township tax assessor. Well, I wanna be informed so I can share information with members of our township.
Mr. Estable?
I'm just here to see what's happening.
Sure. Well, appreciate you guys coming in tonight. Any other discussions? You know, it's open for public comments. We have to finalize our budget come October seventh, we'll be doing that. So where we can cut, we would love to be able to cut a bunch and save, defile a bunch of money. Um, certainly can't guarantee that happening. Lucy, you have anything you'd like to add? This is always a wealth of information.
Um, no, not really.
Okay. You know...
Go ahead.
Does the BIA help with any of the expenses?
So, the way that I understand it, is whatever the arresting entity is, is the entity that pays the costs. Is that correct? So I mean...
We have a contract with the BIA for, if they have overflow prisoners, correct? On a, on a daily rate for, for those that they hold at the law enforcement center?
Right, but that's, so that's not an expense that we bear?
That's a, that's a...
That's actually a revenue source, right? If, if the BIA needs somewhere to house prisoners.
I, I've said it many times, and it, it probably wore out, but the problem with running a jail is that, you want it to be full, but you want the people in the jail to be from someplace else. Because then, it's a revenue center, not a cost. Unfortunately for us, it's, it's, it's a cost, and it's a continuing cost, and it's escalating, and it's, it's not gonna get any cheaper. I mean, cost of labor's going up and everything else, getting good staff is costing more money. And our incarceration numbers are just, they're increasing, so. Uh, and a majority, I think, of the law enforcement center budget is, what, sixty-something percent of the total incarceration for Ramsey County?
Yeah.
Responsibility.
I think it's seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five, yeah, it's a lot. Uh, we're, we're essentially by far the main entity that pays for the cost of law enforcement center, Rhonda.
I can't speak for the county commission, but my name's Boal Cummings, I'm the state's attorney. At least for my portion that I'm requesting the increase, a county of our size, with a crime rate of our size, and the types of crime, we are understaffed, and so we've asked for two additional staff members, another attorney to help manage the load, and another assistant to help manage the load. At least that's the increase from my office, the request, I should say. I'd be happy to talk to anybody if you wanna step up to my office later in the week. Come on by.
Anything else? Any other public comments? Anybody have anything else in the commission that they'd like to add? You know, I think last year at this time, we were, we were hoping on some prairie dog money. I don't think that came to fruition. So we had to make some budget adjustments there for county roads. Big project next year would be the Handen Road, correct, Kevin?
Uh, not the bridge.
And the new bridge. And those we've kinda borrowed from federal aid from years past, so...
Borrowed ahead again?
Borrowed ahead again, yeah.
Once we get that bridge done, though, we're gonna be in pretty good shape from the bridge standpoint.
Right.
From the bridge standpoint, we've been very aggressive on, on fixing and replacing bridges that, that needed, if that are out of, out of service or out of life expectancy and, and downsized a lot of those, so... A lot of those should be coming off our, our tax rolls, or, or, not so much our tax rolls, but need for replacements. But, you, you know, some of the really concerning things, like Dana pointed out earlier, with NDSU coming off the rolls, and then, uh, the road, is that ten mills that's coming off?
No, a minimum, yeah.
Minimum of ten, so, two years down the line.
There is, it, it, don't quote me, or tell me if I'm wrong, but I remember sitting through our Northeast Nine meeting, and Terry kind of expanding upon the point that there was going to be some, one of the mill levees has an expansion on it, too, correct, to try to offset, and offsets that slightly, not the full ten mills, but there is a slight expansion. So there, it's not like you're gonna just have to dump ten mills off, but it's not enough to make up for the difference, and... Anybody that knows, paving costs more every year, and it's, everything costs more every year, so it's, it's, we get less... I mean, and granted, our, you know, mills have increased too, in terms of value, based on such a due, so that's, so we can keep up, but it's always tough.
I think you mentioned a couple of years ago, Adam, that, you know, when you first got on the commission, that we were sitting at about a hundred and thirty mills.
Yeah, maybe a hundred and thirty-eight or something like that, first year I was on.
So, I know we've done really good at reducing the number of mills, but, um...
The state, the state helped us.
The state helped us there, but we're...
Gone there, you know? We were, we were at thirty-seven mills or something, I think, on social services by this year.
So, we need to lobby the state for some help on incarceration costs.
Struggling not to soapbox about one rule right now.
The county commission feels that roads in Ramsey County are in pretty good shape, overall. I mean, there's some holes somewhere. County roads are in good shape, and we worked hard to do that. And people need to use them, they should be in good shape.
Hey, and I think we work really hard to keep our budgets under control. You know, we have a limit on our general mills of sixty, we're at forty-eight this year. Is that right? Yeah, so, um, sometimes when you talk to the state guys, and they, you, you tell them that you want help on certain things, they're like, well, you're not adding your general mill count, and I'm like, well, you don't wanna be. You know, that's the last place we wanna go.
For something they look at.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Yeah, and when, when we saw the increases coming this year too, we kinda sat on the bike. The one thing I think we also, as a commission, should, we talked about quite a bit is, you know, the, the road system as a whole costs a lot of money to keep up, but the county is just a portion of that road system. Without decent township roads to get to the county roads, then the road system is really not fully functional. And, and the townships are always hurting for additional funding too, and, and ways that we can try to help the townships, try to keep their roads in shape better, you know, obviously, blade form and stuff, but if we could find a way to maybe help them a little bit. I know they've got some money out of the, uh, I don't remember the last pot of money that they had, the state pushed out some, some township dollar.
Just, um, it was ten fifteen, yeah.
But we, we'd like to, you know, try to help them too, as much as we can, try to keep roads in shape. But, anything else?
They come down to law enforcement. I don't think anybody's interested in defunding the place, so... I mean, that class line, had to put two, who definitely got lost here, here at all. I really didn't think, yeah, we kind of, you didn't need them, we didn't think for them, we did. And, uh, I guess, the sheriff talks, he's lucky he's got them, keeps him busy all the time.
It's a non, it's a non-winning game.
Yeah, we're in the high forties on average in incarceration and law enforcement center daily.
Daily.
High forties.
Year round. And we, we have drug task force, and they're busy as can be, so we had another drug task force officer a couple of years ago, and then they're crazy busy, and then that gets more and more business, and then we put our people in jail.
But I mean, the other, the other option is to let the community rock, right?
Yeah. We just can't, so...
Yeah, we started in December on the legislators, you know, getting some help from the state for law enforcement. Last December, we started our, so, maybe time to get in front of the I and ask them again. So, part of this problem is theirs also, so. And that's a lot of problem with social services, but a lot of the help has gotten from the state for social service, when they took over the fund. They took forty mills off our, that was huge. I don't know, I'll watch, we're gonna get out of law enforcement center, but it's gonna be tough. And we'll stay on it when this session starts.
And that's, that's one thing we can, uh, address, you know, with our county cohorts down at the Association of Counties meeting. Visit with them and see what other counties are, are dealing with as, as they run through their budget process. And, and encourage people to visit with their legislators as we move forward, and, and, you know, they'll have an interim session, and, and a lot of these issues that we're discussing here today, they have on their interim study committees, and they're studying these issues throughout the interim, so... And even though they're not in session, they're always, uh, always attending meetings, and they're always busy, our legislators, so, uh, when you see them, put a bug in their ear to remove some of our property taxes in mind as well. With no other discussion, we will, uh, close the public hearing on the, on the 2022 budget. And I thank everybody for coming in tonight.
Thank you all. And we're all always available to talk if you have any additional questions.
Yeah. Don't, don't necessarily... Don't necessarily have to take it out on our staff, but you can always call a commissioner, we're willing to listen.
That's okay, I got big shoulders.
Well, worst, worst part is when you generally agree with them and it's all gossips and dang whatever, it's like, I don't know what to tell you, I don't want these kind of new either.
So, um.
Kevin's here to tell us about the pot of gold he just found, right?
We're not to be fooled.
Kevin?
Hey. First, I am, uh, meeting's down in Bismarck next month. I heard the meeting with secondary roads is gonna be on Tuesday.
Ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen.
So, okay, anybody's welcome. Okay, and then also the road project out on US two, I hear the whole project meeting, but I don't know if you guys have heard yet, but I'd like to share this information on October seventh, it'll be the same day as our commission meeting, next commission meeting. And I have three different two-hour sessions to explain that to the public, so anybody is welcome to go attend that. Times are from nine to eleven, one to three, and then from four to six.
They're gonna have the project, so all they're gonna do it, or just?
Yep, they'll have maps and pictures and videos and, yep, it'll be worthwhile trying to discuss.
Are they just taking input?
Huh?
Are they taking input from the public?
Oh, yeah, yep, that's the goal.
They haven't got a final plan though.
No, well, after they get the input from the public, then they'll draft that file plan, and so, no, they, I mean, the concept is there, it's just the details are still, they weren't telling.
Where's the entry at?
Oh, it's gonna be at International Harvest or cannot think of that.
At High Plains.
High Plains. And there are break room things there.
And this is a twenty twenty-four construction project.
Right, right.
And it's how, it's Highway Two East of town.
Yep, it starts, um, by Senex, goes all the way just beyond the rest area.
Beyond the rest area, but not all the way to Querry.
Nope.
No.
They wanna pave the parking lot of the rest area, so they went just past it so they could get that into.
Okay.
Paved the parking lot.
And is that just the east side?
Both sides.
Both sides.
Yeah. They're talking about reducing the speed limit, turning, uh, some turn lanes. It's not totally determined where those turn lanes will be yet, but that's part of the discussion. Maybe some fronting roads.
I heard the fronting road along, fronting road is what I heard.
Yeah. Like I said, it's been in commentary, yep, but other than, I think I did hear that the speed limits gonna be reduced for sure. After their study, they determined that they need to slow the traffic down on there.
Well, we've been telling them that for ten years.
Slowing slowing it down permanently to pass the rest area, are they thinking, or?
No, they'll probably speed up about the beam plan, I'm guessing, I don't know where.
Sure, very, very fast findings there.
Yeah. This will always pass. Have to turn out the campground there, probably beyond that campground, I'm guessing.
Oh, interesting. October seventh.
Yeah, same day of our next meeting. Okay, next, I am, is a discussion on Grand County Two, North and West Penn. I think Dan Webster was curious what we had in mind for that road. So maybe I'll let you talk about what you're using there, Dan.
Well. You wanna be done it?
Go ahead, Kevin. Kevin's gonna pull it up here on the, uh, on the screen, picture of the roadway.
This is looking west towards Church's Ferry where the water starts now. It's probably another mile and a half, two miles to Church's Ferry. So, and it's, if you go north of Penn, this is probably about a mile and a half east of the Penn road.
Yes.
Yeah, west of.
West, west of the Penn road.
Yeah.
Probably.
So how many miles of the road are like this?
Well.
This half mile or quarter miles like this, then you get over a knoll and then beyond that is pure water, it's been lots of water, great amount today.
Yeah, I'd say you got about two miles like, or you got about a mile like this, or maybe not, maybe not this bad. Then then it gets high again, but there's, nobody's been on it. I'm sure there's been some hunters or some forewinners on it, but that, there are sections that never went under the water, never went underwater there, but it's all grown up. And then, and that goes for about another mile, then you hit the, you used to call it the old gun place. And then that's a hill and then, and then it drops down into the water.
Which is. What's that?
So it's about, um, you know, the road's good until we're used to turning up to our farm.
So that picture was taken about right here, I, roughly in here, looking this, looking west. So this is the high knoll here that, you know, there's still some farm ground in here and so. But what's your intention, Dan, you, you planning pumping this water here?
Well.
I don't know what's going on.
I just, I just called Jeff because I just was wondering, you know, what what the county is gonna do because, you know, the lake is finally down far enough to where we could consider holding the water on the north side and pumping it off, you know, and getting, uh, probably, well, I don't know.
Wa- wa- was that eleven that you lost all that south of there, that road?
Yeah, two thousand and eleven is when we went over the road, we lost about three thousand acres. That, so that, um, yeah, so, you know, I remember coming in here and asking the county in about, uh, well, I don't know, Kevin, what year it was, we plugged those forty-eight in squash culverts, you know, so I could so we could use the county road for a dam there to hold the water from going south. And we did that for several years. And then in two thousand and eleven, it just, you know, we had bales and everything lined up there, we just couldn't hold it.
And this portion probably went up under like ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, somewhere in there.
Yeah.
And you could still use this part at that, at that time, but then we had to pick floods and of course.
So, is is that whole run on the east end there we're looking at, is that all out now, all the way up to that knoll then?
The picture was looking here, you, you see the water here, then you see the grass right here.
Yep.
In the picture.
But the road runs all the way to that, that longer.
They're going all the way, there's a bridge right here, it just sticks out in the water, you can't even get onto the bridge and then.
Okay.
Dan, is there, is there access, does that, is that road out of the water to that high knoll in the middle there?
Well.
So you're talking?
No, we have to go through Sletton's.
Oh, okay.
And you have to come from this direction.
Come from the south down there, okay.
But, see, Sletton just put his all in a.
Waterbank or?
Well, I don't, I don't know, I think he put it in, I don't know what he put it in, but I think he put it in W R P.
Yeah.
But Halsman still farmed his stuff to the north there and then I have a quarter there that, that kinda that, that ridge there, that high ridge. It'd be a section four, southeast quarter four, I have a quarter there.
Okay.
That I can't get to. But that's been in waterbank, I think it's coming out now. But, you know, you you can't believe the traffic on the damn thing, that's what amazes me.
Yeah.
It's, it's sufficient, whatever, in the winter time.
Yeah, so there won't be any of that up there, 'cause there won't be any fish up there this, this winter, I think. But, you'll have hunters and you know, I I guess when I, I didn't know what, I didn't know what you guys were thinking, I didn't know, you know, all the, all the materials in the ditch. 'Cause there was riprap for about a half a mile there and that saved it on the north side and then it just sloughed off all into the ditch. And then, and then I think as you go further east there, you know, the waves never got to it because it there wasn't, there wasn't wave action, I don't think, I don't know, I haven't been down there.
Now, this is all pretty good too, here, is that where you mean?
What's that?
Further east, you said.
Yeah, yeah, further east, no, further west, excuse me, further west.
Yeah, I, I can't have been down there in ten years, yeah, ten years, you can't get there.
Right.
But this, this is still underwater here.
So that, that little point then that kinda hits where the kinda ridge is there then, west of there, is it out of the water or is it underwater?
See that little point right there, we had his arrow right there?
Yep.
That's Overland's farm. So I think from there to the west, I'm thinking the road is fine all the way to the hill there.
Oh, really, okay.
Where's the hill?
Right there, the ridge, right there.
Really?
Yeah.
And the land south of that road then is getting used, no?
The land south was farmed until this year, Sletton put it in some program, you know, but wasn't in water, yeah.
But the land north is water on it?
Well, he's, now he's farming, he's still farming that stuff to the north, they didn't, he farmed some of the Noltevire family way up there, I think, and then he, and then Sletton had one quarter up there that, I I don't know if his sister owns it or I don't know what happened, but one quarter didn't go in to the W R P. So, uh, Jim's still farming that and, um, you know, I I don't know, I suppose, uh, you know, Brad will have to give him access to go across his land to get there.
And and really what we should do, be doing is creating some sort of county policy to deal with roads that that come out of the water and, um.
Well, I mean, if if you guys were gonna, yeah, that's, that's just what I was, was wondering is, if you're gonna abandon it, then then, you know, who's, who has liability on it? If I plop some clay on there to hold the water, so I can pump, do I have liability on it? Who, who has, who has those questions, 'cause you can't keep people off it, that's what amazes me.
Well, it's, it's a section line to start with, so since it's a section line, it's gonna be public access unless we abandon the section line or close it, which.
And not, not abandoned, Kevin?
Yes, but only bring that up, but, um, we took this piece from here out about here. We gave it to the city of Church's Ferry, so they turned that into a dike or something, whatever they did, I, I don't know.
Yeah, it was a dike.
What year was that, you know?
Well, thirteen grand.
A- after they got bought out? Okay, 'cause the city was bought out in ninety-nine.
Yeah, after they got bought out.
And I tried to get there the other day, you need a forewinner or something to get up on that dike.
On that?
You can't get there with a product.
That's holding some water back from coming into town?
Uh, yeah, in this area here it is. I mean, at one time it was all on there, but now it's not.
Well, my question would be is if we do something on the section to the east that we're talking about over there, is that gonna improve your access and and things like that that you're gonna need?
To the west, you mean?
Yeah, to the west.
Well, yeah, I'll be able to get to my, to my land. And if you, if the road is intact, um, I would be able to pump.
Yeah, you can pump.
And, and, you know, if the lake keeps going down, the drainage is to the north. So we'll dig the culverts out and water will run to the north.
Well, so, was this a county road at one time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still is a county.
It's, it's the extension of Old County Two that goes east of town, it's on the state line, but it goes west of town essentially.
It's the old highway two.
Yep.
It's a pretty heavily used road when Church's Ferry had the elevator and.
Yeah.
It was busy, busy. Well, I mean, we don't, we don't have a standing policy, but I think our intention has always been if a county road came back out of the water, we wanted to try to get it back in shape so it's at least usable from like you're talking about a liability standpoint, we don't want anybody to get hurt on it. And just from a usability standpoint, so we could, you know, as long as it's, you know, not gonna cost us a million dollars or something, because it's all gonna come out of our coffers, there's no keep a badge or anything like that.
It's a section, that's a section, so.
This is a discussion.
Policy decision that has to be.
Yeah. Bo was just kinda mentioning that this is something that we should add separately to to a meeting and so it can be an agenda item and an action item. 'Cause we're really kinda discussing policy here and, uh.
Well, there probably isn't many roads like this, but.
Right, but, I mean, we did, we, we did do some improvements on that county road south of Church's Ferry and that came out of the water.
Down the county line road, did some county help with that?
Yeah. Um, no.
They always do it, but.
Okay, Kevin.
We always drive by and just mow it.
See if the bridges are good, that's what we.
Yeah, we check the bridges, we mowed it, tried to get it somewhere.
Well, there's a lot of land that's gonna be, gonna be farmed to the south there.
Yeah, that was the thought there.
Yeah.
Be a lot of land south of that road.
South of Church's Ferry?
Old two there.
Yeah, well, I mean, this, this stuff here, I mean, um, you know, I've got, I don't know, six, seven quarters still in the water on the north side. And, you know, I don't know when, you know, that, that's one of the things I, I, you know, I've wanted to say is, you know, if the county, if you were gonna fix it or do something with it, I would, I would probably wait here because
Yeah.
if, uh, you're not gonna do it again, I'm thinking, well, you're only gonna do it once if you do it. And, uh, let's see where the lake does in the spring, if the lake keeps going down next year, you know, and it's down in the spring, we would probably just dump some clay in that one spot where the water is, is, um, still going across. It isn't very wide, probably, uh, I don't know, thirty feet, Kevin?
Out the hose.
Yeah, so, and then we could, if we wanted to do the work, spend the money, then we could pump it. And then, and then it would be all dry, you know, a lot easier to work on the south side. And, and if the lake keeps going down, or the, the lake, the water will be, uh, you know, a lot less on the north side and, and, um, I just wouldn't, I just wouldn't do it, I just don't think you'd wanna do it this fall.
No.
Because we don't know what, it's just too many unknowns and I, I mean, I'd, I'd like, I'd, I'd sure like to see some, something done on it if the county would do it, but I don't want you to do it uh, now and then, and then we lose it again. You know, there's so many things, so many unknowns, I mean, if they're gonna run the outlets, like they say, when the lake is at forty-six, then I wouldn't think that road, I don't think that water would ever get there again, you know? Once, once it gets down another foot or two, you know, it's gonna take a three-foot rise.
Well, can you bring up the contour map there, Kevin, just out of curiosity, so I can see what the, the mission there is?
I, I think you're right, I mean, we should have a, a, a good discussion about how we're gonna handle these, 'cause this isn't gonna be, this isn't gonna be the only one. And I would assume at some point in time, townships are gonna come in and start talking to us too and say, can you give us?
Roads all over out there, there's ferry trails and everything.
They're gonna be other contours too.
Which is, it's kind of amazing that none of the townships have really approached us to this point, asking for some type of help now that we got roads coming back out of the water. And how we're gonna try to handle them.
Yeah.
'Cause somebody's had some, it's taken a lot of work.
And if next, next spring, if, if it's, if it's, you know, if it's something that we could do there, I'd just come and talk to you guys or what?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, yeah, we're gonna need to come up with a policy.
I think in the, in the meantime, between.
What's that on?
This, this up to here is fourteen fifty and then this is fourteen fifty through this middle section to about here. And then, I don't see any numbers for any of this other stuff, but it's obviously lower, so if you're, what are you setting, a five-footed contour or something like that probably?
Yeah.
So this is probably through this middle section here, must be above fourteen, forty-five, maybe a fish.
Yeah, that's about right.
Something like that, and then this is kinda the same way over here, because you can tell where the road bed was, because it's obviously, it must've been, the base of the road bed must've been a more. Something like that. And then this is kind of the same way over here, because you can tell where the road bed was, because it's obviously, it must've been a, the base of the road bed must've been a more fourteen, forty-five on all this run through here than.
It's been forty-eight.
Yeah.
Is that forty-eight? So we set the two feet of contour?
I don't know what year it was, Kevin, when the county raised that road, you know, right out, right past our.
I don't know, the late nineties, I think. Earl, Earl's too tough.
They put, they raised it to fifty-three.
Well, Dan, would you be comfortable with us coming up with some kind of policy and that way?
Yeah, I think you guys should come out here on four wheelers and ride around.
Only if you're supplying a four wheeler, I'm afraid I don't have one.
We're a little ambiguous.
Although the gator up a couple.
Actually, it's good, it's good for you to see the, the western side of the county out there.
It's starting to come back.
Uh-huh?
Starting to come back. Now, we got ways to go, but a lot better than we were, uh, ten years ago.
Yeah, wow, dry ground coming up. Yeah, water dropping.
Yeah, and, um, you know, I, I told Elizabeth, I said, you know, we farm it, we'll pay taxes on it.
So, that, that's a whole other thing we've talked about a couple of times, about how, how do we handle that? Like you said, with the uncertainty of the water going up and down.
Well, you can't do it real fast.
Yeah.
It takes about, my experience so far, it takes about three years to get it.
Three years.
To get it to land and come back full.
Reclaimed and back produced in a way it should be.
Cause mainly because of the cattails.
Sure. Yep. Anytime it rains, they, uh, grow a foot.
Now, this year, you know, because the lake receded fairly quick, we were able to work quite a bit on the lake's shore that didn't get, didn't have time to grow the cattails. So, so I think, you know, if the lake stays down, you'll be able to go out there and seed that and there'll be a good crop in that right away. It's cattails, it's unbelievable.
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll start working on a policy to address county roads that are, um, coming out of, out of the water and have that discussion at, uh, some point in the future. Something planned, Dan?
Yeah, that sounds good. I looked that up. So I want you to be aware of it, cause there is a lot of traffic on it.
Well.
Well, there is a lot.
Well, it won't, there'll be a lot when the hunting season.
It's all posted though.
Uh-huh?
It's all posted. There's posters, it's all, all posted.
That doesn't matter. That's just, that's just, you know.
That'll, that'll stop anybody.
The hunters back their boats in there. Doesn't matter. I've seen them back right over a hunting sign.
Thanks for coming in and talking to us. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan.
Appreciate you. Thanks, Dan. Kevin?
All right, moving on. I need to buy some more gravel for our stockpile at the shop tonight. About fifteen hundred yards. I got three from quotes. Down construction called me seventeen twenty-two a yard. Close was ten twenty-five a yard and super was nine seventy a yard. So that was a big range, yeah.
Seventeen how much?
Seventeen twenty-two, they're totally shy. It's all about the three, yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion to go with a little bit then.
I'll second. And there's no reason that it's any different quality, right? You don't care which one?
Okay.
And the nine seventy was from?
Soper.
Soper's.
So that'd be the low bid.
Okay. We have a motion to go with the low bid in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Well, I just want to just for your information, the tow truck that we had ordered, the delivery, delivery date got pushed back to November fourth. Uh, they're having trouble getting some of the electronic parts delivered, of course, like everything else, but one thing we'll have to watch there is to make sure that it still stays on the issued budget. Cause I was getting close to, I talked to him, uh, last week, I guess I talked to him, and they said if they stick to the new weather for us, that they'll be able to meet, have it here by the end of the year.
Sure.
Alright, so anybody that want to hear. Somebody better put a request in with the big man upstairs.
Yeah, be safe.
Yeah, it said it's not, it's gonna stow us, so.
If they push us back again, we might have to.
Now that we're not getting a float track, we know it's gonna stay. We know it's gonna. Red around all this, we're gonna have a plenty of trouble.
So.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
So, yeah.
That's all we got.
Do you remember the twenty-seven?
Thank you, Kevin. Keep us updated on that, uh, tow truck. Make sure that we do get that in the issued budget. Uh, Mr. Rude?
Yes. You are up. Thanks for your patience.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
For your patience.
Sorry, I had a little problem. Uh, thank you guys for letting me come in on such short notice. I'm gonna be very quick for you. Uh, the training facility is, has its own five-one C three now. So the ambulance service has turned over the whole building to the joint training facility, uh, effectively in the middle of this month. Construction, we had a little, oops. It, uh, in the winter time and we had a water break. And so what we're doing now is we're basically gunning the holes in it. So we had a little bit, we're, uh, we're placing a lot of the plumbing, some electrical. I don't know if anybody remembers, one of our old managers, we had wires falling down everywhere. It was a hazard. So we are putting in two new bathrooms and then, uh, probably kitchen and that area. We have four of our search and rescue teams have a place to have meetings. So we've turned that over and I would request that I was able to talk to that commissioner from you guys, after the city as well. At one point we have talked about, uh, going in for the utilities of that until we got on our feet. Uh, we do plan on getting money so we can be self-sustaining in the future. Looking at quite a few different options. Uh, yeah, talking about the drone, some of the money for the drone will be coming from the stuff that we're doing in there. So a good way for us to combine fire, EMS, search and rescue, we can write for a lot of grants and get a lot of the stuff and it's gonna ease the budget for county and the city. But for right now, we're not self-sustaining. Uh, the plumbing costs is the service, the animal service has been covering all that. So, um, most of it's been all voluntary work. So it's been all the first responders have been cleaning up and getting the place ready to go anyway, so. Uh, basically tonight I was here just to see if you guys would be allowable for one of the commissioners to sit down and just, uh, lend me a ear and listen to me for a while.
Soon, yeah.
Okay. We're gonna see a lot of changes in the future. Um, I'm on the northeast board of directors for EMS. We're seeing a lot of voluntary services closing. I'm sure you guys are sure you have two ambulance services around the county. One is in very much danger of closing shortly. So, um, I wanna stay ahead of it. I wanna help the community as much as possible, so. That's all I got. You guys have any questions for me?
So you got, uh, if you're requesting a dollar amount for the utilities or cost share on that or?
For the cost share, it's about three hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Three twenty a month. And did the city last night agree to?
The city didn't put me on the agenda last night.
Oh, okay. So, we're not here to do approve or discuss that?
Right, we're not here. But they already told that they put in for half, or just has to make an official, so. Always does official for both of you before I ask for anymore. We'll continue to pay for the ambulance service until that.
Do we have, uh, any volunteers that would like to serve on the, the committee with Sean or should I go ahead and appoint somebody myself?
Blade's not here.
Blade's not here.
I think Chair would do a great job.
Yeah, if he's not here, he gets it.
Uh, that's usually how it, how it falls upon. Do you have any idea how often you'd, you'd be meeting or discussions you wanna have or?
Coffee.
Coffee?
Coffee wouldn't have a stand when they're open.
Yep. Yeah.
Well, I'll do it.
I mean.
That's fine.
That's fine with the county. Are there comments involved?
Well, if they have, it'd be a T or something else.
Here, Tom, you go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll do it. That's fine. Do you have my number and everything?
I do not.
Okay.
Gotcha. I'll, I'll grab it later, but I'll just let you guess. Anybody else have any questions?
No, I mean, from our perspective, I don't think there's gonna be any problem as long as if the city's willing to go and half and half, though, we're not gonna pay three twenty a month. This seems like a pretty, uh, good deal to me, I guess.
And, and expanding services, you and I have had that discussion. You know, keeping our rural communities up viable, serviceable by emergency services is vitally important.
You know, and that would be a volunteer, it's not, not the profit. I mean, a lot of these profit driven ones, they, it's a whole different ballgame.
Oh.
It's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah. You're gonna lose this up there.
You're, uh, gonna lose a lot of the volunteers.
Yeah.
Their hours up to the needed being E M T now, this is astronomical.
Yeah. They had a, they had an interesting breakout session on EMS at the last Association of Counties when we were, or so two years ago. Yeah, it was pretty eye-opening about the, the need and, and the amount of work it takes to keep up and certify and you can see why it's more difficult, especially rural, aren't the code of contracting in terms of people, is to get people that are willing to step up and do it.
Well, and what's really wild about it is, and I seem to recall that the federal government doesn't really have any support programs for anything EMS related, is that right?
Very much so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's like, it's like a complete.
Yeah.
It's just like, yeah, we don't, you know, but it's like the wild mess, which is ridiculous, because I mean, quality EMS services should be right up there with police protection and fire protection.
Or at least people would probably assume that it is.
Yeah.
It's just not.
Department of Transportation is actually what we're running through. So, they, uh, this is not.
And is Lake Region Ambulance the only one that's advanced life support within the region or?
Within a hundred miles.
Within a hundred miles. Yeah, so.
We have a lot of things that are expanded on. I talked to you guys a little bit about that. We're trying to get V A transport going here shortly and house of transport. And a little mini ambulance, we call it that. So we have Visa for like lake access and things like that. So we are gonna expand a little bit, but that's, that's just us. But as far as economy wise, we're probably gonna lose an ambulance. Munich is struggling. We're trying to help them camp. Lakota, we got them back on our feet. See, I'll buy Lake State, quote, it's very late, well, it's. They're wanting to take the federal now.
Well, let, let's chit chat. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Anytime you wanna give me a call or shoot me a text, we'll find a time to make work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. New business, Lake Region Heritage Center board appointment.
Said you're gonna do it again, so I'll make a motion that we. Mission Wakefield.
Mission Wakefield. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those in.
You can't say we're ever. You sign the paper every time.
I couldn't believe it.
It's alright. You sign the paper though.
Hey, I like that. Pushy one.
It's a pack of a board. That is a good paper on that board.
Thank, thank you. Uh, approve Homestead credit.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Homestead credit. Both. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. If not, motion, uh, approved. Next item on the agenda would be, uh, an executive session to review attorney consultation. Topics of discussion are reasonable predictable litigation involving Ramsey County and actions and negotiation strategy pertaining to the operations of the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center. Legal authorities for closing this portion of meeting, uh, following North Dakota Century Code forty-four oh four nineteen dot one eleven and North Dakota Century Code forty-four oh four nineteen dot nine, or dot one, section nine. Is that what that provides these means as well?
Correct.
Yes. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the topics in the executive session rather than an open meeting.
So, second.
And then motion and a second to, uh, move into executive session. Roll call please.
I'll be done with you.
Yeah. You say roll right now?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Try to. He said he's already happy with.
Sorry, buddy.
Thank you.
We need, can you do a roll call please?
Sorry. Brown?
Aye.
Leifon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Britt?
Aye. We're currently in executive session. We'll allow Steve to, uh, pause the live session. So we're, we're back into open session and with that, do we have any motions regarding how we proceed with the?
Recommend, maybe recommend by their topic numbers.
Okay. Topic number one would be, uh, under North Dakota Century Code forty-four oh four nineteen dot one.
Eleven.
Eleven was the first one that we discussed. And that was, um, pertaining to a potential litigation that the county could fix.
I, I have no intention of making a motion to any effect.
Okay. So we don't have to vote on, on anything? No recommendation is, is coming out? Motion for no action? Okay?
Okay, no, turn that into a motion for no action.
Okay.
Well, do we have to make a motion that we're not taking any action? It's cleaner that way. I will second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to take no action on the first item that we discussed under executive session pertaining to North Dakota Century Code forty-four oh four nineteen dot one eleven. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by taking aye.
Aye.
Same opposed. Motion carries. Next item on the, the executive session was under forty-four oh four nineteen, uh, dot one nine, which is the second under our strategies and, um, and strengths and weaknesses of a potential action.
I make the motion that the county reaffirms its previous decision to send a letter to the city of Devils Lake regarding the law enforcement center.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll have a second for discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to call Commissioner when he's here. I'd like to.
Well.
I would pay to do it now.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I think Blaine was, was, um, part of the initial discussions that we had initially, uh, in, in when we first initially decided to discuss this. I don't think he's had the opportunity to see the, the full content of.
As a, as a point of clarification, Stacey came over and asked me, it does not need to be this letter verbatim.
Okay.
Just, I'm just saying that as we came out of what we discussed, I make the motion that we go forward with our original intention of sending a letter to the city regarding law enforcement center. Okay?
Yeah, and then we.
I asked Lucas if he wanted to move this draft and he said, not at this time.
Okay, so, so, since we're in the discussion phase of this, then would, would part of that motion then be to allow a certain amount of time for Commissioner Mole to look, or to look at it or? Is that proper?
Well, do we want to redraft a document? Or is this the one that we should, should, uh, bring up for public discussion at our next meeting? Or?
Presumably that would give Commissioner Vol enough time, but if we're gonna go back to the drafting phase, then who knows? And, and like, who knows?
Right. I, I think it's beneficial, at least in my opinion, that we, I, I think we need to reiterate, yes, that we should, uh, send a letter, but I think that we should take action on a final letter at our next meeting.
And that would be the other option as State's Attorney Cummings pointed out, that we could have our attorney draft the letter. And review it at our, at our next meeting or?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's more than fine, I think. And I will add that to my motion that it be the attorney, as long as in general the sentiment is in line with kind of what is discussed in this, in this letter and the discussion that you heard, then I think that's fine.
Uh, yeah, and I'm fine if that is the second of the motion. It allows us, uh, to make sure we have our teeth crossed eyes on it and, uh, time for our fellow commissioners to take a look at it and so.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye. Most certainly, we'll draft by the end of the week to the commission.
Okay, reasonable, thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On the seventh. Seventh of October.
I think it finalized the budget too, right?
Finalize the budget.
Okay.
Um, so with that, um. Any other, uh, announcements from the commission?
All our visitors left.
All the visitors left. We welcomed everybody back in after executive session, nobody came, um.
Next really night for me?
Oh, yeah, um. There, they will be having a tour of the law enforcement center. Um, Rob encourages all commissioners to come down and, and tour the facility. Um, I know Eddie County, Dave, Commissioner Gertz from Eddie County indicated that they plan on bringing their entire, um, commission up on the seventh of October, which is, happens to be our, our day of our next commission meeting. Um, and Rob, Rob indicated that he would be, uh, glad to, um, facilitate a tour if we would like to do that and schedule one. He would say, uh, please, um, keep the number of people under ten if possible. Um, he would ask that, uh, not only our commissioners, our fellow commissioners tour the facility, but State's Attorney, our auditor, um. And so if we want to address that, set that up for October seventh while we're doing, everybody else is on their best behavior. Hey, down there, um, we can do that. Myself and, uh, Commissioner Mark Court toured the facility with, with Rob following our last, uh, LEC meeting on the fifteenth. Um, it, you know, it, it hasn't been my first time through there, but it's always eye-opening to see that facility and some of the potential recommended changes that they would be looking to do, um, through, um, whether it be expanding the services provided. Uh, one of the things that they're looking to do is, is add some sort of kitchen, um, facility on there. Uh, we made a budget adjustment at our last, uh, LEC meeting for food services. Our food service budget increased by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, this year, um. And not only is that number of inmates, but it's the cost, rising cost of, of commodities. So, um, and, and there's areas that Rob will point out. Uh, one of the really interesting things that I saw a big difference in from my last tour was lighting, uh, project that we had, uh, just completed. Lighting in there made, made a world of difference.
Original lighting.
And the original lighting that was in there was, you didn't notice how dark and dingy it was.
That's only forty-eight years old.
Yeah, yeah, how, how bright and accommodating it, it is now, um, world of difference. Um. So, so little, little things, um, like that, that Rob will point out throughout the tour, um, is really kinda eye-opening. So, I really encourage, um, commissioners, if you haven't had a tour recently, to, to go through the facility. And, and he's also inviting, uh, Sheriff, I'm sure Sheriff Nelson has seen the facility many times, but any, any other staff, people that we think would be pertinent and, uh.
Auditor.
Uh, certainly the auditor, um.
So, how, how many, this is, this is supposed to be just our county or is it?
All of them.
Have, have our state legislators been through it?
Well, that's.
That's good.
I think it would be beneficial to ask them to come take a look and to show them what we're, what our facilities look like, what we're dealing with, the need for additional funding sources and things of that.
Extend that invitation.
We'll extend that invitation. Do we wanna bring up the, uh, correction officer basic training?
Yeah.
Um, and so, part of the issue that had been identified through the, um, the non-compliance order and, and through some of these tours was the lack of training through, for our, our, uh, correction officers in the, uh, back part of the jail. We have sixteen currently, uh, full-time correction officers, and when they're hired, they have twelve months to go through CO Basic, um, correction officer basic. A few years back, uh, Department of Corrections, they used to offer that in Bismarck at their training facility, they stopped doing that and left it up to individual entities to do that. Bigger facilities, Fargo's or Cass County, Grand Forks, Ward County, um, Burley County have been able to absorb that into their facilities, hire trainers and get their people trained in, in a timely manner. We haven't been afforded that opportunity, we have to ship them wherever those four big, uh, entities are having it. And sometimes, uh, scheduling i- is difficult. Um, at our last meeting, we had, uh, five out of our sixteen trained, two were currently at CO Basic. Um, so that'll bring seven out of our sixteen, um, up to compliance, uh, up to fully trained. And so we approached the college, and this was approached a few years back when DOCR was still doing it, to come up with a CO Basic training curriculum and, uh, be able to afford to do that project at the college here in town. They said, we approached them, Commissioner Brown, myself, um, several others, um, had a meeting with the college, they said they could do it. After January, their facilities at the college opened up a little more, so they would be interested in a couple of spring semester time periods. It's a, it's a three-week class, basically. And so, uh, they said they could do that, they would look at some, uh, they would need some startup funds to do that. Commissioner Brown and I indicated that Ramsey County would like to become a partner with them on promoting this project, developing this project. And if, um, if initially there's a cost involved for a startup fee to make it, um, feasible for the co, for the college to get it implemented, because you're gonna have to hire a staff to, uh, teach us, because, yeah, the spring, their peace officer trainers don't take a break, they go to other communities and teach the class there. Um, so, and they would need to hire a staff to teach the, the course, develop a curriculum, different costs like that, that would be in, involved, um. So, we thought we could utilize, i- if possible, some COVID dollars from our law enforcement reimbursement that we received from the state. The other aspect, we did have, uh, Representative Johnson invited to, to that, he attended. Um, Senator Elke, uh, had a, another conflict, he couldn't attend, but he would be interested. And I'm not sure if they're gonna have this discussion at the interim, uh, special session of the legislature of being able to allocate, spend some of their COVID dollars. But that's something that we would like to approach them on, on doing if they're gonna have that discussion. So.
One thing to add, Rob told me today, the Association of Counties is jumping on to.
Yeah.
They're gonna talk about it at the session in October.
Danell Kreski, um, is not only a representative for the Association of Counties, she's the executive, um, of the Sheriff Association as well as the Auditor Treasurer Association. So, she's well-versed in the situation, she was up last week at the, um, caucus meeting and discussed it. She came up to the law enforcement center, toured the facility that day, she's been included on all the emails ever since on the discussion of a CO Basic and developing a program at Lake Region State, so.
Rob also said, Pierce, Gillette, Walsh, uh, we got another one, our two counties are all interested.
Well.
They had all had jails, so.
Well, I just, yeah, that just makes good sense, I mean.
They're all having a similar situation that we're in with staffing shortages and getting those, that staff properly trained in a timely manner and not having to ship them to Timbuktu in order to get that training.
Yeah, and there's only so many slots, I suppose, in those larger communities, and when you're running a far larger facility, you're probably taking up a lot of those slots yourself, because they have turnover just like anybody else has.
And, and Rob indicated that sometimes they'll get a, a two-month notice that CO training's gonna be at this time period. Other times they'll get a two-week notice that it's, it's starting, so. If we had a, a place within our local community that where, where we could send people to get trained, um, in a timely manner that they could maybe sleep in their own beds or, or travel back and forth to their home communities. Um, your college has food service, they have housing availability, they have other things that we could bring in, um, people from all over the state that would.
If Ramsey County's buying the startup cost, let me just throw this out there. Basically, I think that we should use that as a way to negotiate on behalf of the LEC and say that if the LEC has COs that need training at any given time, that slots get used for those before they're allowed to everybody else.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think.
But I mean, that's fine, I'm just saying, it's like, if we're gonna help them finance it, then that, to me, should be the other part of the return to the county is.
Yeah.
That you know you'll get trained.
Dave Steff, he hired up the programs out there and, and on the, of all the programs, he said relocating CO, relocating people who go over here for a school, it's a big problem. People don't wanna leave. No way.
I think this is, I think this shows a couple of things. One, it's, it's right in the college's wheelhouse. I mean, it's workforce development, workforce training, which is what we have a two-year college for, and it shows that having a two-year college in the South Street, that's important.
I thought you got a really good reception that day, I mean, it, cause.
Well, and they're, yeah, they're over, so it's just a matter of, yeah, if it's a basic one there, I think we need to do it.
Yeah, a- and they have a, a staff that's already worked some numbers previously back in twenty eighteen, I think it was, when they had this initial discussion. Uh, Bo just reminded me, they're, they're, we're probably treading a little further than just a basic announcement on, on the agenda items, so we should probably move on and, uh, if nobody has any further announcements.
It's been you by the notes, huh?
It's been hereby announced, if you wanna tour the LEC, um, on October seventh, uh, talk to Candy, we can set up a time with, uh, Administrator Johnson over there and we'll set something up. And I think it's a great idea to invite our local legislators.
Yeah, I have just one announcement, but the city met yesterday, correct?
Yep.
So, I, I would assume that went before them already, so it's not like some break in, but, uh, our, our library director, uh, tendered his resignation. At our, uh, last meeting, uh, we accepted it, because we didn't have much of a choice. Uh, so, we will have an interim director and we will be on the search for any library directors. So, my, uh, my golden touch continues at work. At every portfolio I've been on in the last two years, the minute I get on, everybody leaves, I don't know if they don't like me or what.
Commissioner Limon, I advise you to hire several more library directors before you.
So, I don't know if that's public knowledge, but I, it's, we accepted his resignation and, and, uh, I would assume that the city has seen it and so. So, we'll be looking.
Well, darn it.
Yes.
You know, um, yeah.
I don't think you guys wanna put me on any other board.
No.
Just you know.
Alright. With that, anything else?
Motion, George Jared.
So moved. Thank you all for your time tonight.